There's more emails, by the way. I'll be back. As long as you're here, I'll be back.
My name is Greg Jackson. I'm pastor at Mount Olive Baptist Church in Hackensack. I live at 79 Allen Street.
Reverend?
I'm not here as an enemy. I'm here as a citizen. I'm here hopefully to help us to bring some reason in our conversation as lovers of our city and lovers of our library and the various other institutions that represent our city and serve us all well. I am here supporting the library and I recognize that you have a huge job in terms of the budget downfalls and all that kind of stuff that you have to deal with. But I also think that the library is really more than a collector of books. I mean, I think the vision of the library has changed over the years. And I don't go to the library all the time, but I do love books and I think it's important. And I know that the library serves as really a safety net. When you go into the library, there are homeless people there and there are certainly unemployed people there, the young people there, the old people there. And without the library, many of them would be out of doors and many of them probably would be arrested and doing something else in the city. But they have the opportunity to go in there and to, you know, to learn and to grow and to research and to try to find jobs, and I think that's a good thing. And I think that inasmuch as we're able to fund that library, I think that's helping to make our city the great city that we claim to be. And our greatness is determined not by how rich, you know, people are in our community, but how we serve the least of these in our community. And so I'm asking you to do the very best that you can. And I was at the last library board meeting and the deputy mayor, you know, at least I got the feeling from her, to the best of her ability, that she would advocate for making the library whole if something happened, if the air conditioning goes, if the roof collapses or whatever it is. Because $200 and something thousand or $500 and something thousand really, I won't say it's nothing, but it's not enough in a major institution, as I'm sure. I heard you pass budgets here tonight, you know, resolutions for millions of dollars tonight. And so in the scheme of things, what is $240,000 or $250,000? I hope that somehow you'll find a way to meet the library at least halfway. And I hope that, you know, those of us who are citizens will respect, you know, where you are, but, you know, I'm hoping that you will hear the concern. And I certainly appreciate not only these young persons here, but I also appreciate all of the seniors also and others who use this library every single day. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Larry Eisen, 390 Maple Hill Drive.
Good evening.
I have lived in this city for 47 years now. I have had my library card for 47 years minus one week. I use the library regularly. I marvel at the beauty of the architecture of the building, at the quality of the staff, at their ability to find a book if it doesn't happen to be within our own library. I think everything about the library is wonderful. But I think what everybody here is forgetting is that these are very, very difficult financial times. If we were talking about the police department, this room would be full of police officers and their families. If we were talking about the fire department, this room would be full of firemen and their families. We can't have everything. We have to cut back or else your taxes are going to go up. And if your taxes go up, the room will be packed even more than this. It is unrealistic to expect the city to support all the services the city has to support at levels of previous years. The money just is not there anymore. And we need a little dose of reality. Be signed, save our library. Offend me? That's hyperbole. That's such exaggeration. You all know nobody's out to get the library, but there is no reason that the library is sacrosanct. If all the other departments in the city have to take cuts, then the library has to take its share. It's simple as that. I just don't understand how it would be fair to isolate the library and not take a cut if the policemen have to take a cut, the firemen have to take a cut, the sanitation workers have to take a cut. We are in difficult times and you must accept it. There are sacrifices we are all going to have to make, and this is one of them. This is not going to devastate the library. The "save our library" nonsense is such a gross exaggeration, it offends me. Nobody wants to get the library. We all love the library. But we're all going to have to tighten our belts and it has to be accepted by all the departments in the city, including the library.
Wow. Good evening, Mayor. Council, Joe Burrito, Poplar Avenue, Hackensack. This doesn't offend me. I mean, you know, I totally understand that there is, obviously, we run at a deficit. However, I'm not here to talk about the budgets. We all know where we're at. Everyone is pleading, hopefully, that we can somehow scale that back a bit so that the bleeding is not as much. I'm a little disappointed in Mr. Eisen coming up here and saying what he said, especially when he served on the school board, and I guess I'm glad he's not there now. We have students that came here and spoke so eloquently that I wish sometimes that the adults that came up here spoke that way. I also have to say that one of the reasons I came up here was, I was asked to come up here by some families that were a little afraid of coming up and speaking because they really can't speak the English well. And honestly, that's one of the reasons why I moved to Hackensack when I did 15 years ago, because we have such a diverse population. And if you notice, we have a lot more Hispanics and new immigrants coming in all the time. And some of them actually were upset at losing funding because they're studying to get their citizenship exam and they're taking ESL classes and they're practicing with their friends at the only place that they know that they can go and feel comfortable and safe, close enough to get there by foot from where they live. And they feel that there's something that they're gaining, that it's a privilege to be here. That's what everyone's losing sight of, such as about the books, which is important, it's about the kids that we have here, it's about families that come seeking something better, and that is the place that brings them that solace, that peace, knowing that going forward they have a shot. And they asked me to come and speak on their behalf because they said in Spanish to me, "I don't know how I'm going to be able to do these things or get the books for my three kids that I can't get. I don't even know the titles sometimes." And they say they spell them out and they get the help at the desk. The young lady who spoke at the very beginning, who said that she went back to get her college degree. I was brought here from the Bronx, when my uncle moved here in Hackensack in 1977, and I said, "Damn, this is a beautiful library." We didn't have that. We have a gem and we need to protect it and we need to do everything in our power, just the same way that we do everything else that we value here in town. So let's stop the nonsense and the bickering and the backtalk and the nastiness and the belittling, especially in front of kids who came here to have something said and they're putting up with it. Let's move forward and stop the nonsense. And please just do what you can to try to give some back because I'm looking at four out of the five of you here grew up here, have your kids gone through the system, have used it to death. Leo, you know the people that I'm talking about. They're all from where, that play the soccer with you. They're there trying to do better and this helps them do better. Dave, the same with you with the basketball. You know what I'm talking about. Those, your constituents, the ones that bring their kids to play ball, they need this more than anyone else. This is what we're fighting for. And I appreciate if you could do what we can to get this done. Thank you.
My name's Ed Merswell. I live over at 11 Brook Street in Hackensack.
Thank you, Phil.
Yeah, I'm Ed Merswell. I live at 11 Brook Street in here in Hackensack. And I'd just like to, you know, just share a few comments about basically the three Rs. Everybody should know that it's reading, writing, arithmetic. And, you know, you just have to focus on the basics. And, you know, of course, the library plays a major part in that. And by doing that, in my own experience, was that I landed a great job with a great company. And whenever the reference came to, hey, you've got to resource something, we had a rich internal corporate library, you know, being a Fortune 100 company, and it was always the answer is in the book. And, you know, and that kind of mentoring is lost today because of this over-reliance on technology. People are feeling that unless they're super-tech savvy and have the newest smartphone, Apple tablet, maybe a Microsoft Surface computer, if they don't have that, that they are lost. And that goes for adults, too. And so, and the Fortune 100 company that I came from was a computer company. So I've been in it since '77, so I know the importance of high tech. But you also have to balance traditional knowledge with the new items. Because right now, there's just, people are just inundated with pop culture and nobody's really paying attention to anything of significant importance. And this is where you have to go back to the books. I had the fortune one time of being at somebody's house and they pulled out a 100-year-old arithmetic book. And I was so impressed by it because in that, that was a second-year high school book. And that's the material that they covered in your third year of accounting and you had to be a declared major at a good college in order to see that material. So, yes, the education system has been watered down. And maybe, and maybe it's the same thing is happening today, but even at an accelerated rate because everybody is distracted by high tech. And, you know, there's a good old computer equation, garbage in, garbage out, the GIGO, G-I-G-O. And that's, it's just overly prevalent today, you know. And if, you know, you know, one of my experiences was, I was the chief financial officer, and I know that there are boom and bust cycles. And you have to make the distinction of what, knowing what your fixed costs are and what your variable costs are. And you have to really work it. And I have to hand the hats off to the libraries trustees. These are great people over there. I think that, you know, the town, the city and the council here are doing a wonderful job at doing their best to provide the funding for it, but there's, there is that sad reality that there are boom and bust cycles in everything. And you've got to know where you can squeeze the nickel. And if, maybe if more people had access to that 100-year-old arithmetic book, we'd have a better discussion today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, staff. Mr. Mayor, my name is Loring Bush. I live at Summit Avenue, 534 Summit Avenue, right here in Hackensack. Real quick, I want to be brief, be brilliant, be gone, okay? I've got, I came here, I've got two children, I got three children, but two of them are here with me tonight. And I didn't realize it was going to run this long, but it was important enough for me to come here tonight to at least voice to you my views on this. I stand somewhat as a parent of three children. I go here to the Hackensack School Systems. All three of them have library cards. They've, they had them and they frequent the library. They go there often. Also, when it's time to vote, I take them when it's, you know, to vote. They go into the booth with me and they pull, they pull the curtain as well. So it's important for them to be here too as well tonight to see this. I know with budget constraints, it can be very challenging, but I also challenge you, Mr. Mayor and the staff, you know, you have a fiduciary responsibility to the citizens here to try and find that dollar. I know it's extremely hard, but, you know, it's tough. I mean, you can delegate authority, but ultimately you can't delegate responsibility. And ultimately, sir, and the staff, you guys are responsible to try and make this thing happen. So when the bottom line, when it ends up, you know, is your name, Mr. LaRosa, going to be the one that goes on there that says, "You know what? We did the cuts." I own it. Because, sir, you are ultimately responsible and the staff. We own it. We're the ones that made the cuts going forward. Will you, will your name be the one, the first one to be that guy, like they say, or that team that did it? This is what I say. You know, a warm man can't understand a cold man's problems. I learned that years ago by NCO in the military. I got 30 years in and I just recently came back from Afghanistan, I had it about six months ago, and I went over to the library to, because I'm looking to do some transitioning. And I was, you know, looking at the LinkedIn and all of these, as some of the people have said, all the different high-tech pieces of equipment that, you know, you've got to move towards. And one thing I noticed is that there were so many people, there were children, wall to wall on the children's side, there were a bunch of people on the other side, you know, frequenting the library. And I saw a lot of resources, not just books, but all the other resources that are there to draw upon. So I was like really surprised. Actually, I said to myself, "Wow, my tax dollars, our tax dollars really working." Because I hadn't really used the library like my children used the library. But I say that, you know, a warm man can't understand a cold man's problems, meaning that as I listen to a lot of the people here, some of the folks that say, the community, the people that are there, you know, the people that frequent the library, you know, when's the last time you've been to the library? When's the last time you've gone down and touched and seen the folks and seen all the vibrant, you know, the activity that's going on there? I can tell you that I have because I've been there just, you know, at least three times within the last two weeks. So if you're not there and you're not in touch and you don't see what's going on, it's hard to make an informed decision, to make a good, accurate decision on where you can kind of try and find the purse strings, you know, the dollars to try and leverage it to say, "Well, this is an area that is important. This is an area where, you know, children and our upgrowing futures, you know, is utilizing the resources." So basically, I just wanted to voice my opinion. I wanted to let you know what I thought. I got to go because I got to put the kids down. I didn't think it would be this long. Thanks. I'm out.
Thank you for your service.
My name is Francis. I live in 79 S.S. Street. Yeah, ma'am, can you allow me to speak British English? British?
Sure.
Okay. God, I've not seen anybody here speaking British English here. I'm going to speak British English. Okay. My name is Francis. I live in 79... Yeah, my name is Francis. I live in 79 Campbell. British, we say Campbell. Americans say Campbell, Campbell, whatever. And, ma'am, if you're going to cross the library at all, look at me. I want each and everyone to look at me. I came here with that, if you speak English. Now, I'm doing my doctorate. I'm doing psychology. I'm doing a P.A.D.
You can detach. Pull it out. Francis, take it out. You can hold it if you want to stand over. City manager will help you, sir.
Yeah, ma'am, if you're going to cross the library, look at me. The child who came here, I just ask you to embrace the child, invite him to your office. He's going to be a powerful speaker in future. He's going to be a president, I'm telling you. I'm just, you know, making a statement. Who knows? I'm a psychologist. I came here with that English, speaking English. Now, I'm doing my doctorate, P.A.D. in psychology.
Very good.
And the reason why I'm very serious is that the library, I've been in Hackensack for over 20 years, but library, I'm always there. It helped in my studies. I went to community college, I went to four-year college, I went to the person, I went to set in Yeshiva University, one of the best schools. It's not easy to get there. Now I'm doing my doctorate, P.A.D. So my is appeal. I'm just appealing to you. Look at our faces and see how people are grieving, people are suffering. They, I just begging you, please, please, don't cross the library. If you cross the laboratory, they have nowhere to go after school. Where would they go? In the park? In the street? They're criminals. To go and do bad things, they have a place to go after school. So I'm just appealing to you, Mr. Mayor and the councilman. I'm begging you, look at me. I didn't, when I came to teach, I wasn't sick. I used to work three jobs and go to school. I went to work three jobs, but I'm just appealing to you. Maybe, who knows? Who knows? One day, one day, one day, one of the kids would take off the library. Don't, this is, don't pay anything. I would just finance the library. Please, I'm just begging you, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Maureen Balasini. I live at 423 Parker Avenue in Hackensack and I'm a lifelong Hackensack resident, a real Jersey girl. I would like to thank someone who has never seen me, I have never seen him, but he was a benefactor to me and most of the people that lived in Hackensack. He was Senator William Johnson. He was the state senator who was a Hackensack resident, who donated the land and much of the money that was used to build our first beautiful Johnson Public Library. Like you, Mr. Kirsch, when I was five, my mother, who had seven children and I was the eldest, stressed the importance of me learning to write my name, my first name and my last name, because then she could take me upstairs to the second floor of the Johnson Public Library and I could show the librarian that I could sign my name and I got my first library card. The library was an oasis for me and almost everybody here. All of the professional faces that I see, I'm a retired teacher of 35 years, all of the professional faces I see, like Mr. Marsaglia's, the lawyers, the doctors, the business people. And I fail to use the word ordinary people of Hackensack because we have no ordinary people in Hackensack. We have only extraordinary people in Hackensack. And part of that is due to the people at the library. During my high school years, my family couldn't afford an encyclopedia. I went to the library. During my college years, the same. I'm 66 years old and the library staff knows. You see me every week at the library, right, Ms. Beverly and Ms. Costa Rica? I'm there all the time because learning never ends. And I want the same experience that I had, my love for books, which I've passed on to my children and grandchildren, and that these children here. I want Senator's, Senator Johnson's desire and his legacy for all the people of Hackensack, like this generation that uses the library and want to become something and make something of themselves. I want them to have that. So my wish is that you will continue to try to find the funding. Yes, sports are important, our bodies are important, our minds are important, and these children need to have access. Also, as a retired bilingual teacher in another system, just like this young man said, the greatest gift I could give him, to give my students, was a visit to the library because they had that library card and it was free. The immigrant children that we have in our schools now, the library is an oasis of English speakers. Many of them don't have that in their homes. Their parents, like the other gentleman said, they're struggling to become citizens and they're struggling to become English learners. But that doesn't happen overnight. The children will learn the language much more quickly. But having access to books in English, having people that story hour that read to them in English, this is so important. So my wish is for all of us, at some point, tonight, the next time you visit the library, thanks Senator Johnson. His legacy is here. It has made Hackensack such a vibrant community. I hope we will also be able to bring Hackensack, the Main Street area, which you're hoping with your revitalization, bring back the Hackensack I remember as a teenager. But let's keep the library working as much as you can. It really, it really is an oasis of learning that this town really needs. Thank you.
My name is Joanna Cadye, 373 DeWolf Place. So I really wanted to bring up that email that was sent by the city manager. The email basically said that the council and the mayor have supported the library throughout the years, which is kind of disingenuous because this is your budget and you're here now. You were not here in previous years. And so it is a bit disingenuous to claim those previous budgets as if you've been supporting the library all along, when in fact, this is your legacy. This is how you are showing your support for the library. And so we as voters are watching you to see if you really deserve to be where you are now. And so you need to watch how you do your job because we are watching you very closely. And so you really need to reconsider. I think everyone agrees that the library is important, but we also agree that we elected you to be where you are and we can change that. Thank you.
Before we go any further, stop right there because I have to comment on that. I don't look at this as disingenuous because we're in the middle of fixing something that we did not create. When you come into office and within a year and a half you realize you have $30 million in tax appeals sitting on your plate and you suck it up and take it upon ourselves to pay these tax appeals off with a plan, I don't look at that as being disingenuous. I had to comment on that. You know, it's very easy. Yeah, people are watching. I hope they're watching. We sucked it up and are doing the right thing and paying for the past mistakes of other people. All right? Go ahead, Bill. No. Your time is up. No, you may not. No, you may not. No, you may not. You may not. You may not. Absolutely not. Not going to allow that attack without facts.
My name is Phyllis Woodford. I lived in Hackensack all my life, long resident of Hackensack. I've worked with all of you guys on the council. Rose, I love you. Dave, I love you. Mayor John, I love you. Kathy, I love you. Leo, I love you. I haven't been here, I think, since you guys were elected and this important event with the library actually brought me here. So this is something close to my heart and I think that the library is really the fabric of our community. We talk about downtown, Main Street in Hackensack. The library is the focal point. But I actually had two pages I was going to read, but I won't do that since I know it was a long line of people. But I just wanted to share some things about my feeling about the library. I've been there on and off, taking classes and I see some of the librarians. And I've taken classes, how to write and sell a novel on Amazon, how to use Google, how to buy and sell on eBay, how to use Photoshop, pottery, all sorts of wonderful things at the library. And these are adults and teenagers and little kids and all sorts of programs at the library. And I don't think that so goes the library, so goes the town. Somebody talked about crime and homeless people not having places to go for children. Well, the library is the fabric. And I think that you guys need to put your heads together. I know you can do it. And find some way to make sure that our library stays funded adequately the way it should be. And I won't go into... And I won't go into, I'll send you guys an email.
Please do.
Of all, all the other things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Reverend Carolyn Davis, I reside at 192 Stanley Place in Hackensack, New Jersey. I am a lifelong resident of Hackensack, I've been here sixty-six years, born and raised here. I remember going to Broadway School and to the library down by Broadway School and getting my first library card. My first job was in Johnson Library after school, when I was fifteen years old. And I came solely tonight just to hear about the library and disappointed like everyone else, but glad to hear that the plans are not to close it. I brought my children up in the library also. Everyone's entitled to their own opinion, I'm not here to crucify anyone. Whatever happened, didn't happen, we can't do anything about. I came here not to hear politics tonight, I came to hear not people's personal opinions about anyone, I came to find out what we as a community can do to help with our library.
Thank you.
I'm very proud of those young men who came up, and I hope they have learned too that you can disagree politically without being nasty. That's all I have to say. I would hope that whatever you can do, whatever way you have to rearrange the budget, whatever way you have to reach out to the community, this library is necessary. I still go to the library, even though I have a computer at home, there's something about going to the library, there's something about going and getting books still from the library. And when my computer doesn't work at home, I go to the library. It's very important, it's important for the seniors, it's important for the young people to know, so, it's good to have technology, but I'm afraid with all the new technology, the children are going to miss some of the old things, like going to the library and learning how to go through a card catalog, and they don't even have that anymore. It's such an important part of the city, and we are the county seat, and I think it would be embarrassing and a shame for us as a county seat to lose any part of such an important part of Hackensack. That's all I have to say.
Good evening.
Hi, Mr. LeBros. To my Thomas Shiggy Emerald Street.
I tell you.
I'm sure as you remember, I was
Absolutely.
Bit of a troublemaker, Kenny will attest to that. But, you know, the library did a lot of good for a lot of us. Being a single mom, I'm not going to have the opportunity to be able to give my daughter everything, but bringing her to the library, she'll at least have the ability to grow into an amazing imagination and learn things that, you know, she wants to make, and learn whatever she wants to learn, become whatever she wants to become, because everything is there for her. So just think about what Mr. DeFalco would do, because he was all about the kids, and he was a great man, and he would have done a great job up there. So just think about what he went on. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Hi, everybody, good evening. My name is Stephanie Faith Cruz, and I'm a licensed social worker and a psychiatric nurse. I'm sorry I'm late tonight, but I was at John Thier Cancer Center, working on an evening program for the cancer survivors and people who need help with anxiety and depression, which some of us could use. And the reason why I'm here is to support the library, because I do have a laptop at home, and guess what? I get very confused in how to use the computer. I have gotten, I'd be like I said, at the library, I've been living in Hackensack thirty-two years, and I've been at the library, I would say, weekly and sometimes daily since July, to help me with programs, from Catherine Fopushy, from Dawn and Victor, who are back here at the Periodicals, constantly to eight-thirty at night typing. I don't know how to type too well, I need computer classes. I did go to computer school, if it wasn't for these teachers, and especially with also Catherine and everyone else is here, I feel that they helped me tremendously to get on that computer, and I had, I just finished a program for John Thier Cancer Center to help people. I learned how to do Facebook, I learned how to do things that I couldn't do. I was so confused with that computer. If you closed down those hours, I could still be there over there now, typing over there, so it's over many, many hours, and if I didn't get that help from everyone here, I wouldn't be able to do the programs, I wouldn't have been able to do my job searches, the Facebook, the camera, and of course, Word, but of course, most important is the help from everyone here. They sit with you, they teach you. Where do you get that? You have to pay for that. That costs a lot of money, that. And I wanted to thank them for that, and I want to support the library, and thank you so much. You're all great, thank you.
Hi, my name is Philip Fernandez, from 237 Clinton Place. I came by because I wanted to help support the library. Been a resident, born and raised in the hospital, and been here, you know, most of my life. And the library's been a key part of my upbringing here in Hackensack, living in Hackensack now. My kids get the opportunity to go walk down the same halls that I did and pick up some of the same books that I did, and even meet some of the same librarians that I met and dealt with, and I'm not going to call anyone out, some of them are here now. So, you know, to, to hear that the, that there's cuts to their budget and to hear that, that they're not going to be able to provide some of the amazing programs that they are now providing, that I didn't have the opportunity to enjoy when I was a kid, is, is sad to hear. And I understand that this is really about numbers and, and, you know, there's only but so much that you can do, but I think that in cutting in education, the schools and the library, those are things that you don't see right away, right? You just make those decisions, you try to get things back to zero, and then you walk away, but down the line is when those things start to have an effect. And down the line is when you will start seeing that there is a bigger divide in the city, because there are people that aren't learning the language, they aren't learning some of the amazing things that you can learn in a school, in a library, and those are really key in moving this city forward. So while it's easy to say that, you know, we're just trying to balance a budget, or we're just trying to accomplish certain things, there is that knockoff effect that you can walk away from now, but will have an impact down the line. If the decision's already been made and nothing can be changed, then at the very least, the next budget is trying to provide the money that the library needs to keep things moving forward, because like many of the people that spoke before, those programs are very important and very essential to this community. I know that I pay a significant amount of taxes, and I would like to think that some of that goes to continuing on some of these programs that they provide, I take a part in, and my children get to enjoy, and I really don't want them to go. So it's, you know, it's, I understand that there's a lot of feelings here, and there's a lot of people that feel strongly about it, but it is about the numbers, but there is still that long-term effect that it will have on this community, that we really need to take into consideration. It's really not something that can get played with, and something that you can write off as, oh, we just had to do it and it is what it is, because you will, if, the city will feel it. So I just wanted to make sure that, as everyone else here did, that you understand that there is a large population that really does want the library to continue functioning as it is, and if not, have more funding to continue on, providing better programs and additional program and additional hours. So thank you all for your time, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Vito Bernetti, I live on Cedar Avenue in Hackensack, I've been a resident for about ten years. I'm a frequent user of the library, I'm there on a weekly basis, I like to roam the stacks. I've also participated in several of the programs, a leadership course, and also a TED conference. I'm a latecomer to this debate, so I'm just going to ask the council some questions, and hopefully after the public session, you could answer them. My understanding that there's going to be about a ten percent cut this year, the 2014 cut, of about $250,000. Please confirm that. Two, what was the actual notice and what was the actual amount of interaction with the community, the library board, and the, and the staff, so that they understood, or was it later, some of the people are alleging? Can you realistically restore that, if it is $250,000, can you restore it at this date, seeing as we're narrowing down at the end of 2014? What can you do now to actually restore those cuts? What can you do to restore or restructure the budget? Someone talked about priorities. Yes, we certainly need our civil, I mean, we certainly need our public safety, we certainly need our public works, but they have a very strong local and state lobbying effort, they have unions, they have statutory requirements that you have to adhere to. The library, again, I may be a latecomer, but doesn't seem to have that type of effort organized as, as the other units do. And also, what are your plans for the 2015? That's also important. Is this just a momentary blip on the screen? The mayor mentioned that this was something that you guys inherited, I certainly can appreciate that, but the library is a, someone mentioned it, it's a community center, it's a public space, people use it, it can't be defined in words, it's just knowing it aspires to higher aspirations for us as human beings, culturally, educationally, and it's important. So if you could, at the end of the public session, if you could answer those questions, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bernetti, could you just give the clerk your number? Because I want to reach out to you on something. Thank you.
Good evening. I voted for all of you. My name is Ann Stern, and I live on Prospect Avenue. Oh, well. I'm not too sure what I'm going to say, there are a couple of things, I'm not going to go over all the stuff that was mentioned about the library, I use it on a regular basis. There are a number of libraries in Bergen County that are having problems, they're having cutbacks, they're losing hours, they're losing personnel. As the county seat, I don't think we should be one of them. There are a number of kids here, and I would like to ask them a question. How many of you can do cursive writing? Who can't? They don't teach it after the fourth grade in the educational system, and I think it's vitally important to be able to add, subtract, multiply and divide, and to be able to write a cursive sentence, or to be able to read one. I would suggest, not necessarily for the council, but for the library, that if you're looking for programs, try it. Teach them how to write, teach them how to add and subtract, because I will tell you something, if anybody bombs our electricity, we are S.O.L. Absolutely S.O.L. Yeah, you're going to have to use a pencil and a piece of paper. Usually in any, in any municipal budget, there is a certain percentage of waste. I have no idea what the percentage is, I would strongly suggest that you find it and use it for the library.
Chris Coley, 101 Hackensack, Prospect, Hackensack, Chris Coley. 101 Prospect, Hackensack.
Got you.
I believe, if I'm, if I'm, if I'm wrong, say so, I believe there's a total of just more than 5,000 tax-paying people in this town. Taxable property, 5,000.
Explain, you lost me a little bit there, Chris.
If you go to the block and lots and look for tax bills, it comes out to
Oh, 5,000.
A little over 5,000 taxpayers. Everybody else are voters.
Right.
This year, you said 8.6 million dollars has to be raised through taxes on those 5,000 people. Next year, 10 million on those 5,000 people. The year after that, another 10 million dollars. So far tonight, in the first half an hour, you spent 6 million dollars. I want to know that all these, I agree with the library, I think we should save the library when they all are taxpayers. The tax rate of Hackensack, I believe right now, is the highest in Bergen County and one of the top five in the state of New Jersey. When do you start to give the taxpayers a relief, and how can we fund every single program we do? There has to be unevenness for the taxpayers, that we all can't pay for everything all the time. Wearing shirts, coming here all together, arms in arms, like they've been doing here before, has to stop. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Debbie LeBros, Saintine Brook Street. I'm a teacher in town, and I think that the library is a very important part of our town. I'm proud of the students who came here and spoke, I wish I would have gotten here early, but I left work late, but I'm proud of you. Anyone that knows me knows that I speak out for what I believe is right. The library is very important, there's no doubt about that. What I am disappointed in is, is the fear that's been instilled in so many people that the library might close or lose some of its programs. From the data that I've seen, I don't understand how that could happen. I spoke out against a political group that had this family living in fear, I mean, had this city living in fear. And what I see with these shirts is that happening all over again. It's been admitted the library is not closing. If it was, I'd be wearing the shirt. What I don't like is making people believe something's going to happen when it's not.
My name is Maria Carolina Gonzalez, I reside at 46 Pine Street, Hackensack, New Jersey. I usually don't like doing public speaking, but I was taking some notes as I was listening to this meeting. So I just, I'm here because I am supporting my library, it's an excellent library, which I've been a member of since 2001, when I moved to this town. There are excellent librarians there. At least, I go there with my family at least once a week. Saturdays, we go there. My child takes guitar classes there at a reasonable price for eight weeks, eight weeks classes, and they have a concert after the eight weeks. He's been doing this for five seasons since he's eight years old, he's now 10 years old. And when they have their concert, I invite everyone here at the council meeting to, to come see them, the excellent work that our former mayor, Mr. Manessas, is doing with them. I also use the library many times. I've, I've been, I've taken the leadership class, the 10 weeks leadership class, and along with my classmates, we came here to receive our certificate. Mayor LeBros, I remember that was my first council meeting that I attended, and you were here, I remember you from, from that time. I also, I do the knitting classes there, and also computer classes. One of the librarians, Kate, has taught me about the computers, I don't really know much about computers, like Microsoft, Excel, PowerPoint, those kinds of things. My child also enjoys the summer reading program. Reading is very important in my family, I have my child read at least 30 minutes every day, and he enjoys going to the library to get the different books, and we also use the buckles, and we also can access books, order the books through the, through our computer. Let's see. We love, my family loves our library. And one, one lady here talked about cancer. Yes, I'm a cancer patient, and when I was receiving my six months of cancer treatment, um... Yes, I'm a cancer patient, and when I was receiving my six months of cancer treatment, there was really nothing that I could do. The only thing that I was able to do at that time was read. So my library gave me comfort during that very important time in my life. And I think I also attended Sasa classes there. There was like a Spanish week at that time, and TED conferences I've attended there. So please, find the funding for our library. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rosalinda Sebrian. I live at 200 Lowdy Street in Hackensack. I bought that house back in 1977. I think my taxes were maybe $4,000 back then. Now, I'm a senior, I've lost my job, and I had to take early retirement. Now, I'm 62, and my taxes are about $10,000, which, on the side of town where I live, you've known how far it's went down in all these years, we don't have to go into that. I have never had one of my, I never had kids in the school system, and of course, I needed my, for my taxes, I received police protection, fire protection, all the things that I didn't need. But the most important thing that I want out of my taxes is for you to look for somewhere in this budget to readjust it, so you don't cut programs from this library. I've been to, I'm constantly in the library. I look forward to them emailing me the programs that are coming up, and if, most of the time, my computer's down, or I have a problem, I'm at the library constantly, or running up and down, getting the flyers of what's going to be happening. I remember about four years ago, when I first lost my job, I really didn't know how to do the resume, I wasn't up to that, because I worked 18 years and 17 on another job. So I didn't think I needed to do a resume. But with all the new technology, and Lincoln, and all these new things that are, that people are using now, I'm not up to date with that. But I went, I remember back, a few years back, I went, and I think Kathy showed me how to do my resume, how to set up an email, to put my name and what to, and I didn't think of those things. Also, I took the leadership class, that was 10 weeks. I came here and we got our diplomas, along with the other woman that was just speaking. Last week, I was there at another workshop, a program. The router gives very good technology classes. I'm constantly, lately, my computer's down, I use the library there for, to go on the internet. Sometimes, it's most, a lot of us can't afford the internet and things. I, myself, every Saturday, I do a, well, I don't do a class, I help volunteer in the Garfield Library. We have a program called the Happy Reading Tree. It's just volunteers helping the children read and do classes. I have third graders that I help with. I went to volunteer there once, and I've been doing it for over a year now. But children is our future. These are your citizens, these are going to be police officers, have your positions. They, there's so much done at the library, especially for the resources for older people like myself and a lot of my friends, that I tell about these programs and the workshops that go on there. I didn't know about eBay, how to do it. I feel safe a little bit now, because I've attended those. And then I read, then when I repeat them, I go back and take them again. I have friends that I've invited, so they had music there, a concert not long ago, and the room was full. I mean, these are wonderful programs, and I know, I don't want to get into the politics and the back and forth where the money has been. You are a new council and leadership here in Hackensack, which I voted for, and I'm always voting. I'm glad to see the change. Since 37 years, I have seen a lot of things go on and a lot of waste of money. And I think there's a way to readjust the budget, that you can find these fundings to not cut these wonderful programs, from the young to old, kids, the seniors, and the people that use the library, it's very important. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Renee Worschak. Can you all hear me? I live on Prospect Avenue in Hackensack, and I, this is my fourth year that I've been here. October was my day when I moved in, the month. So, the first thing I did, before I even got my, changed my license and my car, was to go to the library, to find it. Where I came from was East Village, and there was a library two blocks away from me, so I always walked to the library. And so I figured I would do the same thing here. Okay. I understand that the state is in trouble financially. I get it, we hear about it, we know what's been happening. But what I really wanted to tell you is that I met all of you when you came to our building to campaign for your position here today. The big ticket item that night was going against the LTAC. And you all said you were going to do that, and that was great, and so far, that's good. But, and that was how to keep our community strong, how to make sure that we could live in an environment that was safe for our neighborhood. Okay, tonight, we have something else. Tonight, we have our quality of life, cultural life, educational life, and we need to keep that. We need to keep that strong, and we need you to say that you're going to help us do that. We need you to, okay, if the budget's set, we need to know that you're not going to go back on that next year and keep on cutting some more. We need you to figure out how you can bring the money back, so that we can continue to have the programs, to continue to have the six days that the library's open, and it's a wonderful place. I reconfirm, I don't have to reiterate everything, all the wonderful things that people have said about this library, because it's great, and the people who work in it are great, and it's a value, because in this world that we're in, education is the most important thing that we can give to our children, grandchildren, and any of the people who come to this country, who come to our city, so that they can grow up and grow out and develop. So thank you, and I really hope that you will do your best to make sure we have the money.
Peter?
Peter Marcus, Annie Davis, Avenue, Hackensack. When I first looked at the library website, and I got an email from the library saying that they were encouraging people to come to the meeting tonight, and they were going to hand out shirts, I said, gee, that's really, I don't know, I don't really agree with that type of an approach, that it's going to be shirts versus skins, or something like that, and we're going to have, going to have a battle on our hands. Also, too, I thought that the points, the bullet points that were mentioned in the website were a little bit inflammatory. I think it gave the impression the library was on the verge of closing, things were going to go under in a hurry, our kids are going to be deprived, and of course, that's not the case. Since that time, I spoke with my good friend, Tony Marselia, and of course, he made some points tonight as well, that there are some serious issues, I think, that the library fears that they're facing. And some type of a compromise is probably warranted, although that may be difficult to do within the budgetary process as it stands right now. But I would simply say, to add to Mr. Bernetti's points, that perhaps you're going to answer, John and company, is the fact that perhaps if some money has to be given back to the library, it can be done on a item-by-item basis, that the library can make a case as to which programs they're going to cut. Are they concerned, for example, with the utility bill? Are they concerned with the security officer in terms of the number of hours that they can keep the library open? Is it a matter of salaries, salary increases, and so on and so forth? Purchases, perhaps? I don't know whether they consider computers and laptops and all the other electronics that they're investing in. I don't know whether they're considered capital or not, but if they are, it might explain why in the previous contributions that were given by the city over and above the statutory requirement, that they bought a lot of those things, and maybe they don't have to buy as many in the next two or three years. So those are the things, I think, that you can huddle up on through some type of a joint conference, and also, going forward, that there would be more communication. I think everybody would agree with that. The people wearing the shirts tonight, by the way, I stand corrected, I've never seen such a well-behaved, mannered, and obviously, product of the library, you know? Wonderful. That doesn't go for all the other usual suspects that are here at all the other meetings, but certainly, the people wearing the white shirts did a great job. Young Mr. Santoro over here, I'm sure he didn't get it all from the library. He obviously has a wonderful family, wonderful parents, a tremendous school, and certainly is a credit to the community. And of course, in my old age, I'm losing it. There was one other point I wanted to make, individual line items. Oh, yes. Since education is such an important part of what the library does, and since you have a statutory requirement from the state to the library budget, and you can give money over and above that, it might be a wonderful thing in going forward, even though it's the same tax base, that the Board of Education, perhaps, puts something in their budget that would fund educational programs at the library. I think that would be a wonderful gesture on their part, since so many of the Board of Ed members are here tonight. That's something to be considered. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
The shirts beat the skins, by the way.
Motion to close to the public.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataiglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LeBros.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Bataiglia.
Well, I'm going to be like a shot and sweep. I don't believe it may be 1% in the city that don't support the library. People that know me know that I always support education. I want to see all the kids participate in the program, they behave. And people that know me know that through the program, they got maybe over 30 kids that get scholarships in different colleges. So I support education, I support the library, and sometimes, we have to go through changes, and it's difficult, you know? So everybody knows that the previous administration led to us, no monkey, we got a gorilla. It's a $30 million debt. So we try to do the best. I can guarantee, as long as I watch, that the library will continue open, the program going to continue to send, because people know me, that I support the right things, and I always will do the right thing for the community. Kathy will go through the numbers, and thank you for coming.
First, I want to thank everyone for being so respectful of the time. Look, we did it all before 10 o'clock. Yes, so you deserve, you deserve a round of applause. I tried to take some notes, so I could try and answer most of the questions, but I have to start by saying that all of us recognize the very valuable role that our library plays in our city, and we all respect that valuable contribution, and there is no one here, sitting here on this council or in this city, that would want to jeopardize that contribution in any way. I have to say that. I can also appreciate the library wanting to maintain their current level of spending and fighting to do so. Believe me, we know quite well how the library feels. Neither the library nor this current administration had anything to do with the mismanagement of the city tax appeals, the $30 million nightmare we've been talking about, $4 million of which you saw tonight was being paid on tonight's agenda, or the underbudgeting of $2 million in the 2013 Lister's budget, they underbudgeted $2 million in health insurance alone, among many other financial issues, which, at this late hour, I'm not going to bore you with. But nonetheless, it is our problem now, and we all have to work together to fix these things in a fiscally responsible way. I attended the library board meeting last week, and was very, very encouraged by the library board's willingness to be part of the team with the city to get our financial health restored. Ms. Flynn spoke well, and we appreciate your nice comments, Ms. Flynn, about the lack of communication during the budget process. We spoke about this at the library board meeting. I apologize there, and I'm apologizing again publicly to the board for this. There is no excuse for this, none whatsoever. The city has an obligation to keep communication open between all of its departments and communication between the city and the library, and we will do our best to correct that situation. And I told Ms. Flynn, you have my number, you know, if you have a question, or you see we're having another breakdown in communication, please let us know. That's unacceptable behavior, and for that, I'm very, very sorry. But our new city manager and our new CFO have spoken recently a lot about a new budget process that they're rolling out. So I think you're going to see a big change this year. The library needs to be more involved in that process, you know, there needs to be a lot of discussion. The city needs to understand the needs of the library, and the library needs to understand the problems of the city. And I am very, very confident that we're going to work together during this budget process, and it's going, everyone's going to feel a lot better, greatly encouraged by that. We all know what a wonderful library we have, and it's very heartwarming to me to see how many of our residents took the time to come out tonight. We know how busy everyone's schedules are, and we appreciate you coming here tonight and acknowledging the valuable service that our library provides to our city. The Reverend asked, how can we help? How can our residents help? Are you, she's still here?
Reverend Davis.
Yes, okay, Reverend Davis, okay. At the library meeting, another thing we talked about was, many other towns have what they call a Friends of the Library organization, right? And these Friends of the Library organizations provide a valuable service to the library. They do two things. They participate in fundraising, either in donations or having fundraising events, and they also provide some volunteer work. So, you know, they may eliminate in some of these special things that are held off hours, you may get some volunteers that will help out in overtime calls for the library, et cetera. So I'm inviting everyone here, right? You all become part of our team. The library and the city are a team, we need you all to become part of our team. I think we want to see what it takes, the city will work hand-in-hand with the library if you need our help. Let's get this Friends of the Library organization going, and let's, you know, put our money where our mouth is. Let's get out there, and let's help the library, let's help the city, until we get ourselves back on track. I'm very confident that we're going to be able to do that. All right, a couple of the questions. For the young man who asked me where, asked us where the $230,000 went. Well, do you have a couple of hours to sit and talk to me? Because anyone who knows me knows, I could probably talk about it for a couple of hours. No, 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 I'm not going to do that, I'm not going to do that. The one biggest thing, I think, the biggest challenge in the budget for us was the $2 million that was underbudgeted in health insurance. I mean, think about it, among all these hundreds and hundreds of line items, because that's what you see in a budget, tons and tons of numbers, okay? One number alone, the health insurance for the city, was underbudgeted last year in 2013 by $2 million, and we had to make that up. We had to make that whole $2 million up in one stone's time, and that wasn't easy. And maybe we did it by 200,000s or 100,000s at a time, you know, but we did it. We did it, and we did it for the benefit of our residents. Mr. Bernetti, are you still here? Yes, okay, I tried to take notes. It was approximately $239,000, $240,000 that was cut from the library's 2014 budget, and it was kind of half and half. I know you said you came in late, but if you saw, if anyone who was here in the beginning presentation by the city manager, there's a certain amount of money that the state requires that's paid, and then there's a certain amount of money that we give above and beyond that. So kind of of that 240, it was almost a 50-50 split, maybe it was like 100 and 130, I think was the way it was split. So some of it came because our property values had, you know, we've lost value there, and that's why the state aid number dropped, the state number required dropped. And the rest of it was because we had to do some trimming, and that's where we trimmed it. Communication, I think I talked about that. I promise you, we're going to do a better job, all right? Or else you come here and hold me to it, because that's the kind of council we are. Can we restore it at this date? In the 2014 budget, legally, we cannot do that. We talked to our city, and if we had the money, we couldn't do it. Believe me, we don't have the money. But if we did, legally, you cannot do that in the 2014 budget. The commitment, I think, that we're all making is, we're going to do a great job, or better job, at working together with the library to do the very best we can in 2015. And it's too soon to say what 2015 is going to bring. We're just starting that budget process right now. And that kind of was your last question, is what's our plan for 2015? So I hope I answered your questions as well. Last point here, thank you all for coming. Don't be strangers. We like that you're here, right? We're happy that you're here. And come and be involved, because this is what good government is all about. Come to these meetings, bring us your issues, talk about your problems. You know, you may be happy with us one day, mad at us another day, that's okay, because that's why we're here. So I hope to see a lot of you back again, and again, kudos to you two young men who were so well-spoken, and I wish a lot to them.
Mr. Sims.
Good evening. I want to thank the community for coming out tonight. We hear your concerns about the library, and we We hear your concerns about the library and moving forward in 2015. We can open up the communications and somehow or another, get this budget back on track. Thank you.[1016.94][1016.94](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Greenman.
I just want to make a couple of points. I appreciate everyone coming, good or bad. If you can stop Mr. Pasqua from making crazy gestures in the back of the room, I would appreciate it, really would appreciate it.
Take it out.
Thank you so much. She should be taken out when she does. I want to, I want to thank you, the library. I've enjoyed your company, Board of Trustee. Mr. Kirsch, your story was incredible, and I give you so much respect for handing this wonderful document to young Master Santora. And I hope when you get to be of the age of Mr. Kirsch, and he is young, Mr. Kirsch, you're going to be as well-known, as well-respected, and as well-regarded as he is. And I'm sure you will do it.[1083.83][1083.83](APPLAUSE). I want to thank you, everyone on the library board. You're just wonderful, incredible people. My time spent with you, and I hope it's going to be another three years, was wonderful. I loved every minute of it. I want to tell you how, how I feel for, and I didn't take any notes, I'm going to speak from the heart. When I was a seven-year-old child, I used to belong to four libraries, because I used to read three or four books a day, and I was embarrassed to go back to the same library and say, I read them, because I read them. I swallowed them, I didn't read them. I inhaled them. So, it did not change. My ability to speak a bunch of languages, I think, came from that. My ability to communicate with people came from that. I owe my education, my life, my capability, my talents, to you. I came here as a member of a family of five. We came with one suitcase. My parents went to work the next day. We went to school, we paid our loans, we are, my brother and I, are both very well-educated people, and this is all because of the libraries. And I would like to offer the same opportunity to every single child, whether they're born here or they come from another country. It's very important. I think we are in a bad economic situation, and therefore, many, many reasons we are, but we have to compete with the rest of the world, and we are the world here. As a child, my favorite saying was, "Per aspera ad astra," through the difficulties and to the stars. And that's what I'm going to leave you with. Thank you so much.[1210.15][1210.15](APPLAUSE).
First off, I want to thank everybody for coming on this lousy night. It was pretty lousy. You folks all made it here, we're glad to see you. I agree with Kathy 100%. I like to see this room full, whether you're mad at us, happy with us, doesn't matter. This is good government. This is the way it's supposed to be. Something comes to be, a budget issue comes up, we have to tweak something, we, you know, we need to hear from you, and we're hearing it, and we appreciate that. First statement I'm making is, we are not closing the library, we know that. And as Ms. Flynn so eloquently stated, our library is the jewel on Main Street. This council's goal, and we've made it quite clear, and we're talking about saving the library, to save this city, we have to revitalize our Main Street. Our Main Street is the key to the success of the city, putting buildings on Main Street, putting units on Main Street, raising the ratables, and by raising the ratables, the library will get an increase in their money from the state. And that's, that's our goal, and that we need to work together on. That's the most important part. This library, this council will continue to take the back of the library should any emergency ever arise. I know in the past, as a councilman, in 2011, this council bonded, I believe, $2.5 million for a new air conditioning system for the library. No problem, not a problem. We will do the same thing again if that needed to happen. Same thing with the roof. We, I know we put out some money for a roof. We're here for the library, the library's here for us. We need to be a team. People say, what are we using the money for? I think Ms. Canestrino kind of identified to that. This council, you know, like Leo said, on our watch, and somebody else said, a young gentleman said, you know, do we want to be the people known as the ones who cut the library? No, of course not. But this council promised, we promised to work tirelessly with this library board to make sure we make this happen. The line of communication, as of tonight, will open. It has to be more open. We all need to know what's going on. We all realize how important this library is to the city of Hackensack. It's an essential resource to the, to our community. We all realize that. I went there as a child myself, and have fond memories of Johnson Library. Somebody brought up Senator Johnson. Senator Johnson's responsible for the library. He's responsible for Johnson Park. He's responsible for Johnson Hall at Hackensack University Medical Center. That was a property dated to him. So Hackensack has been well-served and really has benefited from Senator Johnson, there's no doubt. There has been a total lack of communication, and it sure was a snafu, that's for sure, the way this whole thing went down, kind of in two pieces. It shouldn't have happened like that, and for that, I apologize. And Mr. Kirsch, where are you? You are correct about how important the programs are to youth of this city. All our programs, the library, all our youth sports programs. I've always been an advocate of it, you know that, to me, and I'll say it over and over again, youth programs are the best form of crime prevention we can have out there. Keeps the kids off the streets and keeps them from getting into trouble. Mr. Baretto, still here? You mentioned our diversity. That's, that's my favorite part of the night, because you guys that know me, our diversity in Hackensack is our strength, and it makes us stronger. We are a great community, and we all know that. We know how important our diversity is, and it makes us special here in Hackensack, that we have that diversity, there's no doubt about it. The gentleman I mentioned before about holding us, you know, to the fire, I admire him for bringing his three kids here, and I admire the fact that he involved his children in the process, that they saw what happens, and that's very important. And it's, by the way, Mr. Salerno and Mr. Zieglerhofer, awesome job. You guys are great. Proud that you're from Hackensack. Francis, you still here? We're not closing the library, Francis, believe me. It's not going to happen. Not going to happen. To the young lady, if she felt I was being disingenuous, I apologize, and I apologize, I can't let you come back up and speak once you leave the podium, because we can't do that. But, you know, I just had to state a fact there, that we did inherit a little bit of a mess, and, you know, I'm not, don't want to point fingers, but we're trying to clean it up, and that's it. Reverend Davis, the best question of the night, what can we do as a community to make this work? It's easy, it's teamwork. It's working together, it's putting our minds together, coming up with some different solutions, maybe little thinking, a little bit out of the box than we've had to do in years past, because it's not the same as years past. My last month, I got to tell you, my last month is probably the toughest month in my five and a half years as an elected, as an elected official. My wife can attest to this. It's been a real tough time, because nobody wants to think of losing their library or losing programs in their library. And, you know, it gets a little adversarial when you're a councilperson and you have an issue with, whether it's the library, or police, or fire, or whoever, and there's going to be a little bit of adversity. And I went on the website, and I saw it, and I saw, first thing I saw was a picture of the library with a close sign on it. And I was like, that just, I was like, oh, you know? And then my mind is thinking, I'm saying, well, you know, what if, you know, what if it was a library on fire and the firehouse had a close sign on it? So there's all different scenarios here that we have to think about. We're not just here for the library, we're here for the whole city. We, unfortunately, we have to take care of everybody, or fortunately, we have to take care of everybody, I should say. And we will do our best to do that. We know how valuable this library is. We're going to do the best we can to see that programs don't have to be cut, or no furloughs, or days off, or closing days. We don't want to see any of that. You know, there are some new plans coming out through the city manager, our new city manager and the CFO, that are going to hopefully be able to straighten some of this out. Again, I want to thank everybody for coming out here tonight. And guys, let's work together on this. We'll get it done, all right? Library's not going to close. We're all going to get through this. It's a tough, going to be a tough couple of years budget-wise, but we'll get through it. Thanks again for coming out tonight, I appreciate it.[1632.83][1632.83](APPLAUSE). Motion closed.
Hold on, is it a favor? Aye.